I'd like to call to order the January 18th, Wyndham Select Board Meeting. This is a virtual meeting via Zoom. It is being recorded as people could see on their screens. There are two live meetings happening tonight, so I'm not sure which one is going to be broadcast, but it will certainly be available H up through HW Cam. We will start, I guess, with folks on the select board just introducing ourselves and then I'll go ahead into our motion to move to executive session, so.
Gary Cheeseman, present.
Diane Pocock, present.
Catherine Harrison, present. With that said, I move that we enter into executive session via a separate Zoom meeting under at Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session, strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation sec negoti- oh my gosh, good start. Contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to return to open session. And the subject is the interim town administrator negotiations.
Second.
Great. So all in favor, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So we're going to exit this. Does everyone have their link for the executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave this meeting and we'll, for folks that are here for the open session in a while, we'll be back in half an hour.
We are being recorded. As such, we will take all of our votes as roll call votes. This will be broadcast on HW Cam, if not live, rebroadcast. So we'll start with public input. If there's anyone who has anything that is not on the agenda that they would like to speak to, please raise your hand. I saw that Trudy Reed had her hand raised. Is this the appropriate time for you? Is this an, would you like to speak now? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Go right ahead, Trudy.
Because I don't believe it's on the agenda tonight. So, thank you, thank you. So last week during a department head meeting with Catherine, I made some comments about options for the town meeting location that I would like to share with the rest of the board for consideration. At last week's select board meeting, it was voted to consider having the annual town meeting located outside with the tent. Of course, depending on financial and staffing situations. During that same meeting, Catherine mentioned possibly of having sides to the tent. And Dr. Ting from the Board of Health suggested having heat since we all know April can be a cold month. With enclosed sides and heaters, I believe this is now enclosed space and may be considered an indoor space by the prior recommended, recommended state COVID guidelines. If that is the case, we should also consider the option of using the Bucare Gym and cafeteria areas with properly spaced seating and masks and with the use of multimedia to project in the cafeteria. We could also partially open up the windows to supplement the circulation if needed. This should also help to minimize the setup of town meeting and help to control the costs associated with that tent and special electrical supply and heaters that will be required. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy. All, all good points. We've just begun figuring that out and we'll take those things into consideration. Thanks. So Patrick Waddell, do you have your hand up to say something?
Maybe not? Yes, I do. Yes.
Oh, okay. Hi.
Trying to start the video. I just, thank you for acknowledging me. I just want to say that the Town Government Study Committee is here. We're not here to deliberate, but we did post a meeting knowing that there could be a quorum here. So as of right now, we have myself, Patrick Waddell, the chair, Kirsten Alexander, Harriet Davis, and Roger Smirich. And I don't see anyone else, but that does constitute a quorum. But again, we're not planning on deliberating here.
Great. Thank you for that, Patrick.
You.
Any, anyone else who has any public input? Seeing none. I will, will move on with our agenda. We have a couple of announcements at this point. They'll look pretty familiar. First one is about COVID-19 vaccination appointments are available. I believe still the senior center is doing vaccines Wednesdays, 3:30 to 6:30 and they the, we do have a COVID page, which is being kept up to date by the public health nurse. So if you have more, need more information or you'd like to look at current cases or sign up for a vaccine clinic, whenma.gov/covid. I'll make one last addendum. It's kind of an addendum because so many people have asked about this. Yes, this Board of Selectmen knows that there is a possibility of getting kits, testing kits for the public. We have not yet fully discussed that from how to get them, how to distribute them, to how to fund them. But we are aware of it and we understand that their, Hamilton and other towns are providing them, so just for future.
Catherine, I might jump in on that too. Certainly. I see too that what we need to check, but the, the US Post Office is delivering federal home testing kits at USPS.com/covidtest. So that's something we ought to look at too.
Yeah, it's interesting timing because you know, you're right. In fact, I just, to see if I could, and I could, ordered four kits for our household through that site. The timing is such that by the time we figure out how to get these kits to folks, there may be other options, so. But that's a good point. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, www USPS.com/covidtest. Post Office will deliver, I think they said, late January.
Okay, so there is an option for people to get, I think it's four kits per household through, through the postal system. Okay, next announcement. We've seen this before. We have a winter parking ban. It's in effect now and will be through the 31st of March. No vehicles may be parked on town streets from midnight to 6:00 AM between those dates to allow, in the event of snow or inclement weather, to allow the DPW to plow sand, et cetera, without being impeded by cars parked along the sides of the road. Okay, next. Local election information. Excuse me. Annual town meeting on April 2nd, town election April 7th. Nomination papers are now available through the town clerk's office. Last day to register to vote, March 11th, for annual town meeting and annual town election. And the town clerk's office will be open until eight o'clock. You can register online, www-registertovotma.com. So that's, and there are a number of open seats nomination papers available for all of those, so. We hope that people will come forward and that every seat will at least have one person running for it.
If I could inject again, if Trudy could confirm, we still have no, nobody taking out papers for Housing Authority or Planning Board?
That is correct. I've only had one person pull papers and that was for the Library Board of Trustees. They've been, they've been taken out and they have been returned and they have been certified. So come on, guys, I'm sitting here waiting to get more papers. So let's pull this together.
The deadline for returning the papers, Trudy, since you're still on, is I think February?
February 17th.
Seventeenth.
Yes.
So, so there's a little time, but no, no time is too soon, right?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next one is, and we announced this last time, but we'll announce it again. We, per order of the Board of Health and the Select Board, we now have an indoor mask mandate was effective January 13th of this year. The actual language of that mandate, which has been sent out to, and there were more than I imagined, businesses and other institutions that this would affect. Says effective January 13th, 2022, through March 31st, 2022. Per order of the Wyndham Board of Health and Select Board, face covering slash masks are required in all indoor public facilities, including food establishments. The mandate will be revisited in March. And it's asterisk to say that in the food establishments, masks may be removed when seated for eating and drinking. And this is, this mandate is required for everyone regardless of vaccination status. We're still obviously in a surge and we don't know exactly where it's going, but the masking is a reasonable mitigation strategy. So that's that. Um. I, on my chair's report, I will just tell you, I briefly, I am supposed to update you on what I've signed. There hasn't been very much this week, but in general, I've been signing the payroll warrants that are done by the departments. So if there's a department that is normally has their signed by the TA, I've signed a couple of those for TA's office. I signed a contract that was, I think, I don't know if this is one that we approved or not, I can't remember, but it was the MS4 contract with Weston and Sampson. It's a four-year contract that had been approved. So I signed the fourth year of that. I signed something else, another DPW document, which will come to me in a second. And there were a couple, according to the DPW Afsmi contract, they were rece- to receive raises, I believe it was quarterly. And in order to do that, there was a report that had to be filed so that those raises could occur through the Treasury. And so those were accorded already contracted, so I, I've signed those as well. I think we talked about the fact that there were a few signatures relative to grants, particularly the grant for the master plan that required a TA signature. And I believe that's pretty much all I have signed, so. So let people know that. That's my chair's report. Is there anything that the Select Board members would like to report on at this time?
Not here.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Catherine for meeting with the staff to make sure that everyone understands that we're behind them and, and working for them. And also I was wondering if maybe we should put that USPS link for the free COVID test on the website. I have seen it on a variety of different towns' websites.
That's a good idea. Maybe since Michelle is here, you can take note of that. And put that on the website. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a consent agenda minutes as usual and we have a motion.
Sure. I moved to approve the Wyndham Select Board meeting open session minutes for December 29th, 2021, January 4th, 2022, January 4th, 2022. Was that the executive session?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Executive session on January 1st, 2022, and then open session January 5th, 2022, and January 10th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, and I believe where this motion would contemplate holding the minutes for January 4th.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take a vote. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. And as always, thank you Catherine Tinsley for taking those minutes. So our big announcement for the evening. And the subject of our executive session. We said last time that we were going to look for an interim town administrator. We didn't actually have to look very far, as it turns out. We've had some discussions with a person whose name will be familiar to most people. Tom Younger was our interim TA. Just for, from November, Gary reminds me till June-ish of, of this past year. He did reach out when he heard that we had, we had an opening, so to speak, and offered to help. So we put together a pretty straightforward contract or letter of agreement, memorandum of agreement for him that pretty much mirrors his responsibilities and conditions from the last time that he was here, with the exception that this time we, this, we've asked him to work a shorter week. It's not a 40-hour week as it was before, but instead a 30-hour week. And really, that's pretty much the change. It's coming at the same rate. So he is willing and able to start on the 14th or the 24th rather of January. And I guess at this point, we'll take a motion.
Move that the Wyndham Select Board approve the memorandum of agreement dated January 14th, 2022, for the interim TA, Thomas Younger, with a start date of January 24th, 2022, pending final approval by council.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Welcome back.
And I think this will be a nice stabilizing, as you had said before, a person to have in town hall as we go through this transition.
I was, yeah, I was sort of grateful for the fact that this is a person that will be able to literally just, you know, sit down behind the desk, desk and start up, not exactly where he left off, but certainly with a lot of familiarity with the projects and issues and initiatives and also has a lot of years of experience with town meeting, so, town, yeah, town meeting, so. I'm excited to have him come on board. Did I say 30 hours a week? He will be in town hall Monday, late Tuesday into our meeting, Wednesday and Thursday. We're playing, we're going to, he's gonna, we're all gonna have to experiment with the hours a little, but he should be able to be here all day. Monday, Wednesday and Thursday and in time to do, to staff the Select Board meetings on Tuesday. So we have a motion and I think we had a second, so let's take a vote, I guess. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So after this meeting, I'll send him a quick email and let him know. He'll probably know before I send the email. I don't know how that train of information goes, but it moves quickly. But I'll let him know that we've unanimously approved his interim appointment and we'll all see him next week on Monday. So thank you, Tom, for that and thank you to the Select Board. Okay, we have a presentation and I haven't looked, I'm at the participants. But I'm hoping, yes. So we've had a lot of, I've been hearing a lot and we've, we as a board have received a lot of questions about our ARPA money, American Rescue Plan Act money and how we're going to use it and what decisions they're going to make and what it can be used for. I knew that Powers and Sullivan, our auditing firm, and also have been consultants for us on a lot of things for a long time. We've been working with them to give us specific advice since the act is so complicated that it's almost impossible to to wade through if you're not an expert. So Jamie reached out to, as it turns out, Jim Powers. I wasn't sure who was going to be here tonight when I, or late last week. But Jim is here. Thank you for coming. We've asked Jim to just give a, you know, sort of an overview of what this is, what, what the town may be able to use it for, some of the latest developments. So I'll turn it over to you, Jim. Thank you for coming.
No problem, Catherine. Thank you. So tonight, I'm, I'm gonna give you kind of an overview from an auditing perspective and some of the new rules, because now they have the, the Treasury has finally issued their final rule. I put together a, a quick PowerPoint if you'd like me to share that. If not, I can just go through it.
I think, can we give Jim co-hosting ability so he can share his screen?
Let me see if I can, if I click share screen. Host has disabled that.
Michelle, I think there's an ability to do a if not.
If not, it's, it's really not that complicated.
Okay.
And I can send over the presentation afterwards, so.
That'd be great.
The board can have, and everybody else can have a, a copy of it. So.
Okay.
Basically, what we're looking at is with the American Rescue Plan Act. Catherine was 100% right, this being extremely beneficial but extremely confusing in its implementation. It's been going on for a while and even from the auditor's standpoint, they've been running with the interim final rule. And Treasury, the US Treasury, which is running the particular program, I even put in a question, they had about 1,500 questions into their interim, interim final rule because things were ambiguous and what was allowable, what wasn't, wasn't allowable, how can you spend your money? This doesn't make sense from an accounting standpoint, how things are calculated, how things aren't calculated. And one of the most important things that they did change in the interim final rule was this section that we go through and you know, it's a grant, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a grant between the US Treasury and each one of the communities. And so you get a direct grant. Some of the funds may pass through the state. But it, it's still your grant. It'll be reported under the Single Audit Act. So when we do the audit at the end of the year, all of the expenditures that you make in accordance and under the ARPA grant will be audited by us. And a, a different report than you're used to will also have to be completed. There won't be an additional charge for it. It's part of our general audit contract. And you know, whether you get a, an expenditure in any one particular year of federal funds in excess of $750,000, it requires, in effect, a compliance audit by your independent auditor. The things that you can spend money on in accordance with ARPA, there's, there's a lot of different things. But one of the things that is allowable, you may need assistance as you go through with some of the reporting and some other things. 100% of those particular costs, you know, are allowable under this particular grant. And basically, to oversimplify this, what you have to spend these funds on for expenditures that you incurred from March 3rd, 2021, which was in fiscal, you know, the last third of fiscal year 2021. And the expenditures will go to December 31st, 2024. The good part about that is you've got, you know, almost, you know, three and three quarters years to spend the money. So they give you plenty of time to spend the money. You can spend them all, all the money next week if you want to, or you can allocate that and use it as you see fit over the next several years. They also give you, as long as you've incurred a contract, say, as part of this, that you can spend the money up and through December 31st, 2026. So they give you another two years. So say you were building something, an infrastructure project or whatever with the funds and you went in and you had a contract that started in 2024, but it wouldn't finish until the calendar year 2026, that would still be allowable and you'd still have to continue to report on this. The town basically is eligible and will have available to it $1,577,630. All right? That's nice. And, and that allocation for all cities and towns within Massachusetts and actually through the nation is based on population. There's certain amounts that were given per person as you went through. Some of the money were direct grants to municipalities. Others could pass through the, the county for another reallocation. But since Essex County is no longer in existence, in effect, goes directly to the town as part of that particular allocation. A few counties down in the South Shore are still alive and kicking. And they took the money in and in effect give subgrants to their member units as they go through that particular process. That really doesn't concern you as you go through this. Inside of ARPA, inside of that $1,577,630, like I said, you have almost four years and almost six years to actually spend all these funds. And ARPA requires that you spend them on specific purposes, which I'll go into a little bit more detail. And there's four eligible criteria. One is to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. Obviously, every community, even as I was hearing you, you know, speak today about mask mandates and and also how do you distribute COVID? Can you get some? Could you go through there? Those are some things that would be allowable for the town to spend this ARPA money on without any fear of not being allowable as you go through that. To, and second one would be to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-19 public health emergencies by providing premium pay if you want to. You also can provide grants to eligible employees that have eligible, eligible worker. You can rehire people. There's all kinds of ways that you can spend this. The third one, going out of order just a second, to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. So if you had a water line or a sewer line or culverts, et cetera, that you needed to spend money on, that would be an allowable project as you go through. But then the fourth one, it's called the reduction in revenue, all right? And this one, it sounds, basically, a lot of places lost a lot of revenue during the pandemic. Meaning that, so say if you had especially a recreation program. And recreation program, normally you'd get $2 million a year in recreation programs that, that you provide the use of the citizens of, of the town. Well, if you got $2 million in like, say fiscal 19 and prior annual, as you go through that in fiscal year 20, nobody was doing any recreating for all intents and purposes, so a lot of people would not be paying for those particular services and you lost revenue on that. If you were a community that had a lot of hotels, motels, a lot of restaurants, as you go through, a, a lot of places have a lot of their budget based on hotel motel taxes, part of the general fund to balance their budget, meals, taxes, et cetera. Obviously, they, they experienced a lot of revenue reduction. And so what the ARPA funds does is say, night, out of these particular funds, we're going to allow you to calculate a reduction in revenue. And what the federal government did, especially in the final rule, if you had read, if you read the interim final rule, which was active until about a week and a half ago, the Treasury finally came out with their final rule as they go through this. And before this, you had to go through this crazy calculation to calculate revenues from 16, 17, 18, 19. And then all of a sudden, you had to switch to a calendar year basis to find out what was your revenue for calendar year 20 and convert that based on what they considered. What their study they did and said, what did the average community in the nation lose as revenue? And they ended up coming in with a percentage of, everybody lost on average 5.1%. This was probably the most controversial thing, probably had the most questions to the Treasury as they went through. And I think what they finally did is part of the solution to this. So instead of having, going through this revenue calculation that you went through, they basically said, we're gonna change this and we're going to allow communities like Wyndham or anybody, actually every community in the nation, they can either, in effect, go through the revenue calculation, determine if they lost, in effect, 5.2% of revenue as they do compared to calendar year 20. Or we're gonna give everybody, in effect, a standard allowance. It's kind of like doing your tax return, where everybody, when you file your IRS returns, you can take the standard allowance or you can itemize. And what they did was they put this at a level of $10 million. So everybody can take a $10 million revenue loss. And that would be that. And so for Wyndham's standpoint, you get up to $10 million. So you're not gonna get a $10 million. You get $1,577, the amount that was allocated to you. However, they're going to let you spend that $1,577 under the revenue loss provisions. Now, the reason that's important is because as they defined what you can spend the money on, it is extreme. it is extremely broad. All right? So, and it says you can spend it on governmental services. Those that, in effect, those services that the government traditionally spends funds on. So you provide education, police, fire, health service, you know, public safety, administrative expenses. And what they basically said is that you can spend all, any of all of that million one five seven seven, and you don't have to prove a revenue loss or not. And you can spend it on governmental services. Some of the things that are allowed as part of this, you can now spend this to construct the school. Okay, I was talking with a larger client today that's getting about sixty million dollars. They didn't take the allowance. I helped them figure out the amount. And they're thinking about spending that money, you know, forty million of it to to construct the, a new elementary school, which is this year based on the MSBA. And then they would have, in effect, a free school. Not hit the taxpayers and things like that. He was going to talk to the mayor after I hung up with them, but it's now wide open. Before in the infrastructure that I talked about earlier, they didn't allow the construction of paving and roads, but they did allow water and sewer infrastructure projects and broadband. So you could, if you wanted to pave a road, now use those funds for that capital purpose. If you wanted and needed a backhoe, or you needed a police vehicle, or you needed a new fire truck, you can spend this under this particular category. So the list that they give is part of the, is is non exhaustive. And so you can spend it on administrative service, public safety, education. There's all kinds of ways to spend this money. So the flexibility of this final rule gives the town incredible latitude of how you want to spend that money. So things that may not have been available prior to the final rule are now available. However, the final rule still requires there are things that are in other sections of that that say you can't spend money on these particular things. So you can't send money over to the stabilization fund. You can't send additional funds over to Essex Regional Retirement System to knock down your liability. But there are ways to do things that are that are legal as you go through. It also reduce the financial reporting burdens if you use revenue replacement. So for example, if you wanted to just say, and again, this is allowable, you could say that we're going to use this on the school assessment. All right? That's all you have to do. The reporting is, and when we come into audit, when you do the reporting to the federal government, you just have to say, we used it for the regional school assessment. And we decided to use five hundred thousand dollars for that. You're done. All I would have to do is make sure that your regional school assessment from an audit standpoint was higher than five hundred thousand dollars. And we all know that is. It's higher than the one million five seventy-seven six oh three or whatever it is. So so what's happened in the last couple of weeks has made communities like Wyndham and everybody's life a lot easier than it was two weeks ago. So when you're determining what to spend the money on, I still recommend that you contact us as your auditors to say, Jim, this is what we're thinking of spending our money on. Let us do a pre audit of that. Because what we don't want to have happen is that, say you decide to spend the money and there were still some things, especially when you get into things like premium pay, et cetera, that are not as simple, even though you have revenue replacement, a premium pay has specific rules that you have to abide by. And I'm not going to go into it in the meeting tonight, but that becomes a lot more complicated as you go through that. But what we don't want to have to happen is next fall, when we come out to audit and I take a look at what you spent the money on and you show me, you don't want me to say, oh, that wasn't allowable. We can audit anything at any time. So when you're making the decision, once you figured out what type of expenditures you want to do, I'm just requesting and I'm doing it for all our clients to kind of just send me off the list and say, if we spend the money on this and the narrative why it actually is allowable under the APPA regulations. Now, I can say yes or no, or we need to find out more information of how you're going to spend it. And if you do that, one of the things I will do with Jamie is to make sure that your accounting ledgers are set up properly and that it's accounted for properly, depending on what you want to do with the money. And that includes giving money to local north of profits, giving money to local businesses. It includes a variety of different things as you go through that. Again, I just think it makes sense to include that. We're not the enemy. And we don't want to have a finding with a question cost as part of the audit. I'd rather deal with it out front. And obviously, if there's anything that you wanted to spend money on, and I had a problem with it from an audit standpoint, I'm available for any meeting to explain to the board, the select board or anybody else that needs to why that's a problem. And so again, I don't know how much in detail you want me to get into, but there's all kinds of, there's there are a lot of different uses and it would be difficult to tell you the truth for you not to find ways to spend this money. Okay? Because I know sometimes you struggle with your budget, making it meet, et cetera. You can, you can use those funds if you wanted to, like I said earlier, saying that, you know, well, we're going to spend this money on all departments except for, you know, like I said, pension and a couple of other things or transfers on the general fund, and you can balance your budget with this over the next several years. You can take it all in. You have to do it. Now, I was talking to the Department of Revenue the other day that's in charge of the recaps, et cetera. And I was talking with her and just explaining, okay, communities can really, and she's saying it herself, thinking they do it one way and say, oh, if we did it this way, that's going to give us this result. But when you use the recap, you know, the tax recapitulations, when you set your tax rate, there are unintended consequences in using a grant fund as we go through it. Oh, and by the way, this is a grant. And the state and and a lot of other places wants the town accepts that particular grant, you can spend that without further appropriation. So you don't have to go back to town meeting to vote to spend that. You can if you want to, but you don't have to as you go through with any grant that you accept. And the money comes in in different tranches, you know, you know, half upfront that you should have already received. I actually forgot to check in with Jamie to see what's come in so far. And then what's that?
We did receive that.
Okay, and so you you got half of it upfront and you get, you should get the rest somewhere between April and June of this year. So your money will come in. And then you just have to report that. And part of the reporting quarterly report that'll start in April and I can help Jamie with that to make sure. And one of the, what I'll do is make sure I audit that report before she submits it, especially the first one. If you don't spend any money upfront, report's pretty easy. You spent nothing and this is what you got in. If you spend money, you just have to make sure. And there's different requirements on on how you spend that depending on what category you're spending the money under. And the feds are making you have a a good narrative of why the expenditure of funds that you selected to do does relate to either governmental services, which doesn't have to be COVID related, but the other ones do. So you really have to have a good narrative. You just can't put three words down and expect that to fly either with us auditing that particular report, because we still have to audit that report or explain the narratives as you go through to say why this is COVID related. And in that narrative, if you're using one of the other allowable expenses, that's where you have to really just explain that. And again, none of this should be that difficult if it's an allowable project. And realistically, in the last couple of years, can you name anything in your life or business, you know, your personal life or business life that hasn't been COVID related? I haven't found one yet. Okay, as you go through this and so that kind of gets me through the summary of where you are and what you need to do. And Catherine, I don't know if you want, I don't care if you open up for questions or whatever it is, I'm here as long as you want me and as you go through. You're muted.
You're muted, Catherine.
Thank you. Let's open it up to questions for the board, from the board. If we have time, we could, there are a lot of folks on, maybe we could take a few more questions. I just want to make one comment because I can't see Jamie, but I bet she's cringing a little. So there's lots of folks here and I'm sure in town that are going to be looking to use this money. And I just am thinking the right thing to do is any request, based on what you just said, Jim. Any request or any thought will accumulate them, will hopefully have a list. But I am going to suggest that they be report, go through the finance office through Jamie so that she can be your contact person and have you do those pre audits on anything that you know, may come through that may or may not be prioritized by the select board. But I'm just a little wary of, you know, every department head giving you a call and asking you questions.
Yeah, I'd rather it all come into me so that I'm on the same page with Jim and I can properly and appropriately respond to people. And I think it'll just be neater and cleaner that way.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Catherine, if I could just interject, you just maybe think of something.
Sure.
When you're doing the reporting, when Jamie's doing the reporting, every project that you do requires its own report in that particular section. So if you decide to you know, do you know, everything at a thousand dollars, again, unless it was a project itself, that would require, you know, you know, fifteen hundred, you know, line items and explanations of what you do. Most of the places, and again, nobody's doing that. They're looking for bigger projects as they go through balanced in their budget. Or if you do have a project, you know, just, just, I'm just recommending, don't do a bunch of five hundred dollar things that are all different. It's not really, but you can. It's just reporting. So you'll have to pay Jamie premium pay for doing all the reporting.
Is that enough hours in the day for a million five hundred dollar project? Never mind the pay, there's just kind of hours.
That's true. So from Diane and Gary, have you got any questions for Jim? Obviously, this is a general presentation and anything specific, we'd have to probably ask him, but questions based on the presentation?
I'd just like to say thank you, Jim. You know, I waited through the forty-four page summary and I've got to know that this is a four hundred and thirty-seven page final rule. So it is a very complicated situation and I think
Mine's in two documents that I'm reading.
We need to be
Still on like page ten, Gary, so we're getting
Care for this money and, you know, see where we can use it effectively with a minimum amount of internal paperwork. So I think more discussion as we go forward here, but thanks, Jim, for a good short summary.
And you know, the forty-one page summary, the overview is really a pretty accurate representation of what you find. I'm about, I'm about halfway through the four seventy-seven trying to find, this is my fourth APPA meeting today. So
It hurts, but it helps, right? Diane, did you have any particular questions at this point?
No particular questions. Again, I just want to thank you because you you made it make a lot more sense and it's a lot clearer to me. I hope that we can get a little community engagement and figure out, get a list of things to start working on as a as a board. But thank you.
That's Diane, that's what most communities are doing. You know, having a transparency, trying to figure out the best way to use these particular funds. And realistically, it's pretty much all the money is still going to benefit all the citizens as you go through this, how you spend that money, whether you do it on infrastructure, whether you do it on water or whatever it is. You know, you can go out and you know, hire additional people to because it doesn't seem like this pandemic's going away. And so, yeah, there's, and and use your imagination when you think about this, because like I said earlier, there's not many things that the the town hasn't hasn't experienced the last couple of years that isn't pandemic related. Especially when you're dealing with the health, as that, when I logged on, I was not paying attention upfront. And I think you were talking about town meeting and whatever it is that you had to space out and you had to go through here. How do you do that? How do you do that safely? Do you need offices there to do details to make sure that people are following the particular rules and to say, say, or other citizens of Wyndham don't need that regulation. But most places I've been, there's always a few that don't really follow the rules. So, and again, that would be allowable as part of the expenses.
So it seems like we will put this on an agenda soon, next meeting maybe. And in the meantime, I asked the department heads and the FinCom and through Jamie's office just to come up with, oh, you know, just some thoughts, particularly, I think, as it relates to we have budget problems every year. And if there is some way that we can reduce the pressure on our budget, maybe for some some capital or something else, I'd be interested in in those ideas. So we'll we'll gather up a list, we'll make sure they're feasible and then we'll we'll have a select board discussion on that.
And there are, there are ways that you can still be in compliance. And again, with the fact that a hundred percent of your revenue is now governmental services, I don't think you have to do anything special, but if you wanted to accomplish something that you're not really sure, sometimes you can get there with two steps as opposed to one. I know in a business, I can get to pretty much anything in one step because I own the place. It doesn't allow you to do that. And my job is to make sure that if you need to go through two or three steps to make sure you're in compliance with also, you know, Massachusetts general laws and budgetary and the proper recap, but also the compliance requirements for APPA. I'm here anytime anybody wants to discuss that.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming, Jim. This has been great. At least we know what questions to ask and where to go for them. And I'm sure you'll have, be having some conversations with the town through Jamie shortly.
Yes, we will. So
Great. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you all.
Take care. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Okay.
So the next thing that we have on the agenda is to discuss very briefly, actually, a draft regional public health intermunicipal agreement. But I, the following thing is having to do with the hiring of a full-time police officer. And the chief is here and I believe the officer has been here for quite a while. So if the board doesn't mind, I'm going to skip over temporarily a new business C and go to new business D, which is discussion and vote on recommendation to hire full-time police officer. And I believe we have Chief DeNapoli here to discuss that and to introduce this person. So Chief, take it away.
Thank you, Catherine. I appreciate it. I'm proud and happy to be here tonight with the recommendation for a new full-time police officer. As most of you know, in this fiscal year, we were approved for an additional full-time officer and you know, has always been my thought as I moved up through the ranks over the years and the leadership I received as a young cop is it's better to have a position vacant than to just fill it to fill it. And, you know, my first chief taught me that and this was certainly that case. We had a process. We weren't a hundred percent thrilled with the candidates in our first process and we did a second process and and I'm real proud of what we did in a real strong vetting scenario through a background and all the other steps that go through with it. And it brought us Matthew Corian, who's on the Zoom with us as well. He is from Groton, Massachusetts. He's going to be, already has housing set up to be moving to this area. He's a graduate of Pittsburgh State, which they have a phenomenal program. Many of you may recall Keegan O'Donnell, one of our newer hires, who's been a phenomenal hire, also went through the same program. And with that is it's a five-year program where you get your master's degree and you come out as a full-time certified Massachusetts police officer. And that's what's happened with Matthew here today. He's just halfway done with his master's degree. He is full-time certified. And he, he's going to be scheduled to be starting on And he, he's going to be scheduled to be starting on Monday, should all go well this evening. And Matt, if you want to say a few words, please, please do.
Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you. I just appreciate the opportunity. Again, I come from a small town in Groton, just like Wannam, and I'm really excited for the opportunity. Again, I have five years of education, dedication, hard work, training. I'm definitely ready to put it to the street and try and make a positive impact every day, so I'm very excited.
As you can see right out of the gates, we did great. We, we, what a great young man. And I want to thank Officer Labrie, I should say Detective Labrie, who did a phenomenal job with his background and recommended him for hire. It's funny, having done so many backgrounds over the years, you inevitably end up getting connected with whoever it is you do a background on, because you're meeting the friends, you're meeting the relatives, the family members, the neighbors, and you really get to know the candidate. You, you get, you know, connected to them. So they kind of have a special, special place in your heart as you move through your career with them. When you, when you were part of that process. I know Detective Labrie is super excited as well to get Matthew on board. So I just want to say congratulations with everybody and I look forward to your positive vote.
Okay, so we'll take a motion and then we'll take some comments if there are any, but I'll take, I think we're ready for a motion at this point.
Okay, moves that the Wannam Select Board accept the recommendation of Police Chief Denaply to hire full-time police officer Matthew Ryan Grekorian.
Second.
Any comments or questions, Gary?
Great resume we saw and we look forward to a good service in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I agree. After what, what the chief said, I mean, you're all set.
And, and I, I know from past experience that the process, Matthew, that you had to go through to, to even be recommended for this job, aside from all the training you had to have, was probably pretty rigorous. So I have a lot of confidence in, in the chief and his, his officers and detectives' ability to pick, to make a good recommendation. Can you just repeat what you said the start date would be?
It's going to be Monday, the twenty-fourth of January.
Okay, so we should probably include that.
So amend the motion to include the start date of twenty-four January twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, we'll take a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Congratulations and welcome. We're really glad to have you with us and look forward to meeting you in person at some point.
Absolutely.
Okay, and thanks, Chief, for, for being here to introduce that.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, board members.
Okay. Okay, we do a lot of other things, but this health, going back to the public health, regional, regional public health intermunicipal agreement, because there's, it's a little bit time sensitive and it will not take long. We, I don't remember when the original presentations were made about this, but it was a while ago. Wannam is part of a, already part of a four-community public health consortium. The group's goal is to improve regional public health services primarily through utilization of shared services, of course. This, they're looking to hire a public health nurse coordinator and a public health social worker. And the consortium has recently received a two-hundred-thousand-dollar public health excellence grant from the Commonwealth. So this document that we have in our packets, which is the draft intermunicipal agreement, has been drafted by KP Law through Hamilton. And we've signed, because we share legal services, we did already at some point, share a disclosure to allow them to, to review the draft on our behalf. And as an update, one of the goals of this was to hire a regional public health nurse. And actually, that has been done. That position was offered to Rachel Lee, who was the public health nurse, is actually still acting until everything is settled, the public health nurse in Hamilton. So the reason, it's only on here tonight so that we could introduce what it is, remind people what this is. There is an intermunicipal agreement that Hamilton is, has seen, of course, they're the lead on some of this. It's a group of Hamilton, Essex, Rockport, I feel like there's one, yeah, Wannam, of course. Those are the four towns. We don't, we'll, Hamilton is going to wait to sign it until they've heard if we have any comments or questions or concerns. So our goal tonight is to just really see that we have this, take a look at it, see if there's anything, if you have questions about it, let, let me know and we'll bring it back at the next meeting for our deliberation and vote. We just want to give it the two meetings and, and let, allow it to move along. So does that make sense, everybody? Okay. What do we have next? So we have tonight the culmination of many months of work. It is a report from the Town Government Study Committee. And as you heard already, there are multiple members of the committee here. They are posted as, so that they can be here all at the same time. But from Patrick, who's the chair of that committee, we hear that they will not be deliberating. I'm going to, I think this will be mentioned again, but I'm just going to kick this off by saying that our role as a select board in this process is, I won't say simple, because it's really not simple, but our charge, our role is to decide whether or not this report will be on the warrant and go before town meeting. It's at this point especially not our role, or will we take the time to debate the benefits or the negatives to the actual recommendations? But to actually receive the report, make sure we understand what's in it. And then at some time before the warrant closes, maybe at our next meeting, decide whether or not we wish to have this on the town meeting warrant to go before town meeting this year. So with that just brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Patrick, who'll give us a presentation and then we can ask some questions. So Patrick, thank you for being here.
Thank, thank you for having me. Thank you all. I just wanted to thank the Town Government Study Committee. Our members were Kirsten Alexander, David Anderson, Harriet Davis, Michael Lucy, Deidre Parati, Roger Smirich, Paul Weaver, ex officio as former town moderator and town council, and then Tom Younger, former interim town administrator, and Ryan Ferrara, our former town administrator. We had a great group. I also want to thank Catherine Tinsley. Catherine, thank you for your work. I've never seen minutes get passed without, without edits, as often is, as you got those done. So thank you very much. As Catherine said, we're not here to debate three to five member select boards. We're more, you know, you have the report, understanding you just got it, you know, please read through it. You can reach out with, with questions. But again, the question before the select board, as Catherine said, is not whether three or five is better for the town. The question before you is, should the town be permitted to, to see this on the warrant and vote it at the, the next town meeting? We've been working for the past year. We were formed in January of twenty-twenty-one. We just finished our work now. Studying and debating whether Wannam would be better served by a three- or five-member select board. We went through several steps to gather information. First, we went to key person interviews, former and current Wannam Select Board members, town administrators. We own, we got seven select board members, three town administrators to respond. The surrounding town select boards, especially towns that have recently addressed this question. Then we submitted an online, we put together an online survey for our boards and committees, all Wannam boards and committees. So that survey went to a hundred and fifty people, forty-three, no, excuse me, sixty-four responses, which gives us a response rate of forty-three percent. That was great. Of that, sixty percent of those were in favor of five, thirty-one percent were in favor of three. And then we, we reached out to the general population and, and we didn't get great response there. We got thirty-four responses, twenty-three of which were for five, seven were for three, and four didn't see it making a difference. So we spent the first half of our, our time gathering data, determining what surveys would look like. And then we went into deliberations. We took a straw vote and the, the initial straw vote held through the entire debating process deliberations. So our final vote was four, two, one. Four members in favor of a five-member select board, two members in favor of a three-member select board, and one member abstaining. And I'll go through the, the members. So the four majority were myself, Patrick Waddell, Kirsten Alexander, David Anderson, and Deidre Parati. The, the two that felt were best served with three were Michael Lucy and Harriet Davis. Our one abstaining member is our current town moderator, Roger Smirich. And again, all of the, the data methods, the report is fairly lengthy, but it'll talk about everything that we did to gather data. And then to our recommendations and why, why the majority thought that five was the right number, why the minority thought three was the right number. Both sides were permitted and encouraged to submit their reports without, without, without input, but with, with the freedom to, to say what they wanted. This was not a a, a, a single-minded group. So again, the question to the select board is not whether three or five is, is a better membership for the select board. The, the question before you again is, will this be on our town meeting warrant in April? Be happy to answer questions. Members are here as well, but I don't want to take up too much of your time. You, you do have the report and I encourage you to read it and, and.
Questions from Gary or Diane, pretty much about the process and anything that Patrick has talked about tonight? We did just get the report. Yeah, go ahead.
Right. So I, I started to go through the report. I haven't gone through the whole report yet. I appreciate the report so well organized and put together a lot of information. So that's very good information. Will we be sharing that on the website? Is that already on the website?
We, we have shared all of our documents. I, I, it is on, it is on the Town Government Study Committee in our shared drive, which is accessible to the public. But I, I do think it would be good to put this on the front page of the, the Wannam website. That would be fantastic. And I just want to say, th- this group was amazing. You know, we were not of, of, of one mind. We had some heated debates, but it was really a pleasurable committee to be on. I, I really enjoyed this group of people.
That's great.
It, it was a well-put-together report. I look forward to reading the rest as, as always, we would, would never typically vote on the night that we start talking about this. So we'll have it on the next agenda. I did have one question, a general question, I guess. I noticed in some of the appendices that they're, the KP has opined on, you know, how this would, how this could move forward, you know, sort of the process. And one of the questions that they talked about, I just want to make sure I'm correct, because I think it's something we'll need to decide, is I think actually it was written, assuming that in addition to a town meeting vote, there would be a ballot vote. And although you guys didn't see that as your role, we would see that as ours. So for the board, when we have our discussion and deliberation and decide on not only whether it should be on the warrant, but one of the other things I think we should look at carefully is that process that's, that's been laid out. Because we will need to have a discussion about whether or not we think, seems like either is legally acceptable. Am I right about that, Patrick? Either just a town meeting vote or a vote and a ballot question?
Yes. So, so KP opined that the general court would be more amenable to an annual town meeting vote and the ballot. But other towns have done it without going to the ballot. The ballot can cause a year's delay, depending on how it's structured. Typically, it's annual town meeting, petition to the legislature, it comes back and then goes to the ballot. So that puts another year in the timeline. Other towns, including Hamilton, have done it without that step. And KP has said that it's possible to, to get it through, but the legislature could come back and ask for this ballot vote, just as an affirmation of, of the town meeting vote. Because you'll get, as we know, we'll get more people at the ballot than we do at town meeting.
Okay, so if the board would take a look at that, well, it'll make it a little bit easier for us to decide what, what we need to decide. I want to thank you, you and the, and the committee. Patrick, I, I watched a lot of the first meetings. They were extremely interesting, very detailed. An incredible amount of hard work, no matter what, I don't want to say side you on, but what position you would support on this, coming out of it, or how you would vote at town meeting. There's a, a lot of work and very thoughtful deliberation that, in my opinion, went in, in this committee had. I was pleasantly surprised at how collaborative the discussion was, because it's a difficult conversation. And clearly, there were folks with differing opinions. However, there was a lot of really good discussion. So thank you very much for the work. I don't think your work is quite over, so we're not disbanding the committee yet. But look, stay tuned. We'll, we'll read this study a little bit more and we'll, again, I think we'll probably be, hopefully be able to make a decision on those, at least some of that at our next meeting.
I think Gary was raising his hand.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, let me also thank.
Everybody's really little.
And we set it up in, you know, certainly it's a year's worth of work and I think the select board needs to dedicate time that reflects that level effort on this question. That's really going to be a profound question for the town to handle. The, I would think that we're going to have this on our next agenda for discussion then, I would hope.
Yeah, well, we will have it on another agenda for discussion. Again, discussion only on, limited to, should it be on the warrant? And should there be a ballot? But yeah, I think we have to effort the discussion and it's really up to the board. We have until February, we closed the warrant on February twenty-second. I'm sure this committee would like to hear from us sooner, but, you know, we have meetings, two meetings in February. So when folks are ready, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda. We don't necessarily have to make that decision tonight. But it would have to be either on the first or the fifteenth of February in order to meet our deadline of getting it on the warrant. And Patrick, looks like he needs to say something.
Well, I, I, I just heard that the warrant is closing on the twenty-second. I originally thought it was the fourth, but that's pushed to the twenty-second?
Uh, I'm pretty sure I'm right. Hi, I always question myself on dates, but it's the twenty-second.
It is a twenty-second. Excellent. Thank you.
Of course, we, we'd rather, you know, not wait till that date.
Yes.
Right, right. So if, if Gary and, and Diane, if you think you'll be ready to answer those two concerns or questions that we have on the first of February, which is our next meeting, I guess, we'll put it on that agenda. If, after you've read it and you think you'd like to, you know, wait to another meeting, we can. I'll take this opportunity to say that we, it may be necessary for us to squeak in an extra meeting sometime between now and the time the warrant closes. So there'll be opportunities. We'll email around. Next week, we'll actually have an interim TA who can coordinate this activity, at least the timing of it. So does that sound okay, Gary, Diane? Okay, Patrick, again, thank you and thank you to everyone who was, is here tonight to listen and also on the committee that did so much work. We'll be talking again. We'll let you know.
Thank you very much. Thank you for, for, for having us and thank you to the Town Government Study Committee. You guys were amazing. Thank you very much.
Take care. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, now to make this easy for you, Michelle, because we're jumping around here, we're going to go, I think the next item we have is letter F on our agenda. And that is one. And that is one, one before this one. There we go. We have an opening on the council on aging board. Julie Clay, her, her letter of interest has been in our packets. She has shown interest in this, in this position. And so why don't we take a motion and then we can see if there's any discussion that we want to have before we, before we vote.
All right. Move that the Wyndham Select Board appoint Julie Clay to the Council on Aging Board effective January 19th, 2022 for a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
And do we have a second?
I was muted, but I did second.
Hate that you put, um, okay. Any comments or questions on this appointment?
Very nice volunteer letter, and I think we're ready.
Yeah, I, I want to thank Julie for coming forward. I've worked with Julie before. I think she'll be a great addition to the council on aging. And I think even after Julie, should she be appointed? I think there is still one more opening. So I'd encourage anyone else who could come forward, but I think we're lucky to, to be in a position to appoint Julie. So we will take a vote. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Most definitely.
Catherine, most definitely as well. So thank you, Julie. Someone will notify you. I'm sure you'll get a call from Trudy to come in and be sworn in and get your paperwork, et cetera, et cetera. So great. Thanks. Thanks for that. And I'm glad we're able to fill that position. So now we have letter G, and this is a little bit of an open ended discussion. And this is where I, I get to stop talking and the board gets to start. So last week, I'll just introduce this by saying last meeting, was it last week? I think it actually was. We talked about the fact that we now, we have an interim town administrator, but we need to do a search for a permanent town administrator. And I believe Gary was going to look into some search firms and get some information, particularly about à la carte. You know, what kinds of things they can do. Diane, I think was looking into, going to look into towns that have done their own, conducted their own search without a consulting search firm. So I am interested to hear what you guys find out, found out. And maybe Diane, do you want to start with that?
Yeah, I was just looking up the, the, the report information that I had. I think I spoke to seven communities who had all recently went through a TA search. And it seemed as if the majority of them went without a con, not without a consultant, but without a firm, such as we've done in the past. So most of the things that I heard that the consultant that some of these communities would use was just helping to organize a job description and advertise the position. One community used them to sort of screen the applicants and make the appointments and such. So that was really all I got. It sounded as if one community had shared the statewide hiring manual. I think that's what it was called, which was very interesting and really told you how to hire people from start to finish. That I thought was very helpful. And so I really, I think we can, we could probably find some quality candidates on our own is what my, my gut says.
And Gary, what?
Yeah, so.
About some help.
As we went through the files at Town Hall, we have not located the actual RFP yet from the previous search, but did find the proposal from our previous contractor, Community Paradigm. Looking at that, there was really only one option provided in the contract, and that had to do with a a community engagement event. But looking at the proposal, essentially it's a full process that they go through as far as services there. So I'm thinking that, you know, having done this recently, having a, a committee that went through the search process and quite familiar with what we want to look for, that perhaps we should go with Diane's proposal to look at an internal effort giving the timeline and perhaps to the financial situation.
Okay. I think that's would certainly save us some money. And I think I said last week, I, I, I agree that have, being a little closer to the search, that, but I doing a lot of it ourselves rather than contracting it all out is probably, is probably a good thing for us right now with the search. So that being said, two things, no matter whether, whether we had a search firm helping us or not, we're going to need a screening committee of some sort, I think, to make a recommendation to the select board ultimately for some number of finalists. So if it's okay, I'm going to put out there now that anyone who is interested in serving on a, a screening committee, which would be a, a limited amount of time, but basically looking at applications and I'll, perhaps doing some interviewing. Would please reach out to the town administrator's office to, so that we can get started and at least have some names of people that when we get there, we, we can appoint for a screening committee. It seems like we need to put together what the process will look like and then plug in the pieces. I think we can do a lot of that just on the board, but I'm also thinking that again, Tom Younger has probably a lot of experience with this and he may actually be able to consult in his 30 hours a week on, on some of this. But it seems like maybe we should put this on our next agenda in two weeks. But in the meantime, when, when Tom's here next week, to start looking at what the steps would be for us to do it ourselves. So we can start putting together a timeline and who's going to do what pieces and what we have to parse out, what we can do internally. But we'll try to do most of it internally is what I'm hearing. Yeah, Gary.
Yes, I think the hard point is to determine who in the staff will really do the administrative portion of this. Because I think the screen committee, we have people out there that are familiar with it. And they're either going to have to kind of up their game and do a little bit more of the background checks and so forth, or we really need someone designated in the staff, maybe Tom Younger himself or who we, whoever he can involve to actually get the administrative paperwork done.
I'm putting, going to put you on the spot, Chief Danapoli for a second, but if I may, since you're here. If we, is it possible, once we have chosen a finalist or a couple of finalists, is it possible for our, for our police department to do the, what is it called?
Tori.
Investigations, you know, whatever kind of checks that would need to be done, background checks for our candidates?
Yeah. So I mean, we're limited legally with certain things. We can, we can kind of delve into the weeds i- if you want at some point about that. You know, that, that's my background. That's the deputy's background. As far as background investigations, we, we certainly have the experience and the ability to do that. And we can, we can talk about that. And I guess it depends on what, you know, what everyone is looking for as well. Cause there's, there's a bunch of different options and there are places that just do that. If it's a cost saving scenario. There are places that, you know, a lot of these companies, whether it's MRI or paradigm, whomever was mentioned that you could, you have almost like an à la carte, you know, you can, certain portions of the process that you're interested in doing. You can do, but yeah, we can certainly talk about what the different options are.
Okay. So I'm, I think I'm hearing between the lines that it would probably be more appropriate if we were going to do anything outside or à la carte that we save the, most of the background checking for an outside agency for this kind of a position. I, I will talk offline, but I just want to get a general sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, yes. So as I said, it's, it's sounding like a February first agenda is going to be a busy one. But I think that maybe with some help, we can put together, you know, at least a plan that we can, that we can review and see if it makes sense to us on a timeline. I think one of the, okay, I don't know how to say this is my own personal opinion. I think it's a, a, a new, a new and fresh opportunity for us as a board and for us as a town to look at, to look at TAs. There's been, you know, people talk about how much turnover we have. We can debate that or not. But so I, I would love to see in all, in all positions, but this as well. Some people get involved in, in this process. And probably on the screening committee who may not have been involved before. The institutional knowledge is always really important, but I think some, some fresh ideas or fresh faces is good too. And I think we typically, and we'll decide this, but just to give the folks an idea, I think we typically have around seven ish, right? Seven, nine people on a screening committee. So there are lots of folks out there that please sharpen your pencils or keyboards or something and, and look forward with that. So if we could put together the skeleton of a plan for our next meeting, that work out okay and we'll, we'll fill in as much as we can at that point, and then we can get started with it.
How do you, how do you want to start that? Do you mean, should we each try to pull something together and then?
Well, I, I'm thinking that Tom may be able to give us the skeleton of the steps that are required. And that would leave us to be able to say, well, should we do this ourselves? Or should this be done outside? Or what do we think the timeframe should be? Or I, I think it's easier for us to, in, in a sense, edit than especially from someone we might as well use as expertise since we'll be rather than try to do something that we, I, I think as a board have never really done from scratch before. Is that okay?
That makes sense. Yep.
I'm gonna, might move along a little bit faster. Okay, that's, that's good. We'll get started. I think we've said we'd have a goal to, well, have a goal to have some, a new TA in place by April 30th. I think that's a really aggressive goal, but I think it's a worthwhile one to try to work towards if we can. Okay, let's move along. We're the second item, the next item, which is letter H is very straightforward. It's that time of the year. The select board will open the warrant in, and then close the warrant later. And in that period of time, any articles that need to be acted on, whether they be from the towns, people, town staff or also for citizens petitions. We will entertain whether or not those will be put on, on the warrant. But the first thing we knew, we need to do to get this started is to vote to open the town, the warrant for the April 2nd town meeting. So we'll go for a motion, please.
Move that the Wyndham Select Board vote to open the warrant for the April 2nd, 2022 annual and special town meeting on January 18th, 2022, and to close the warrant on February 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion about this?
I have a question on why we have a special town meeting. Do we have something definite on that?
I don't think we do. And I, I, I must admit, I had to do some research on this to make sure. I think we make this motion this way in the event, because sometimes we use a special within the annual to pay a pass bill or something. So this just allows that to happen, doesn't require that it happens. So that's why that's worded that way.
Thank you.
Okay. If we're ready, we'll vote to open the warrant. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes. So open the warrant tonight and close it on February 22nd. Okay. Okay, we're, I, I'm looking at the agenda and realizing that we have something in old business that won't take long. But we, we'll probably left this gentleman, this gentleman on this call forever, but it's good because he's new and, and you know, he might as well get to see what this is like. So we'll, we'll go back. We do, Gary's going to give us a quick, and I think it will be a quick review of the quintuple board meeting that we had. But before we do that, again, with, with the board's permission, we have hired a new DPW director. We do, because of the way we worded the motion last time, I'm sorry, that's my fault. We do need to reaffirm his memorandum of agreement. It doesn't change anything, except that the wording is correct. So at this point, Rich, I'm pretty sure you're here. I've got lots of people on the screen.
I am.
You are. There he is. So just so that everyone can meet Rich Souza, he is our new DPW director, started last Monday. Yeah. So welcome. And maybe if you'd like to share your week's worth experience.
Yeah, sure. So, uh, yeah, no, just basically getting to know the staff. You know, really sort of getting into budgets and, you know, seeing what the, the requests were. And, you know, I have a meeting with FinCom tomorrow to do a bit of introduction with them and sort of pick off where, pick up where Bill left off. So yeah, it's, you know, again, it's only been a one full week and, but jumping right in, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity. I appreciate it. And, you know, definitely I look forward to, to getting through.
Great. Well, we're happy to have you on board. And I think you actually started right after the first snowstorm. So you lucked out that way.
I did. Yeah, it was actually right after.
And, and that is a, is a testament to the fact that we have a really good crew that you'll be working with, I think, who have a lot of experience with snow and could even do it without leadership, but I'm sure they're happy that you're there.
Yeah, no, they, they did a great job. And, you know, they actually got me up to speed as far as, you know, basically just, just the, the process, the procedure that, that they take. So, um, you know, it was good, something, you know, basically my first day or two learning, you know, a, you know, a decent sized event that, um, you know, that they taught me, you know, it was more or less the way they, they do it in Wyndham. So it was, uh, something that was good.
Okay, great. Okay. Are there comments or questions for Rich before we, you know, get the motion correct? Since we already hired him.
All right.
Sorry.
Here's the motion then.
Okay.
Move that the Wyndham Select Board vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Wyndham and Richard Souza, DPW Director from January 10th, 2022 to January 9th, 2023. This term may be extended pending appropriations for two follow on extensions with a starting annual pay rate of $120,455.
Second.
Okay. So we took, took twice, but I think we got everything in this time. If there are no further comments on that, and since he's, is working here and has seen all of these and has agreed to all of these conditions, I guess we could take a vote on this, on this final motion. So Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes. So got that detail procedurally out of the way. Thanks again, Rich. I'm sure we'll be talking to you. Good luck with the FinCom tomorrow. They're a pretty nice group of people. So I think you'll have a good discussion with them.
No, thank you. I look forward to it.
Thanks.
Thanks. How you doing?
Thank you too. Sorry to make you wait so long. Um, so Gary, if we can, we don't really, I don't even, if we can just go back one maybe. So last week we had a, whenever, January 13th, we had a meeting of, with the schools and Hamilton. And Gary, can you give us just a review of that meeting?
Yeah. So we were there for a five way meeting, which was the Wyndham Select Board, Hamilton Select Board, the Wyndham FinCom, the Hamilton FinCom, the school committee, and also on attendance was the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for finance. So the Hamilton FinCom laid out their proposed budget, identifying shortages and the pressure that they're feeling with the shifting enrollment moving towards their side as opposed to where it was a few years for us. The Wyndham FinCom did not have a formal presentation, but the chairman presented a verbal rehash of our position, which includes structural deficit, challenges meeting it and declining free cash. The Hamilton Select Board, I think in general, expressed a need along with the town manager for further cuts in the school committee to the tune, I believe they're talking $1 million, which would be one third to Wyndham, two thirds to Hamilton, basically. The, their FinCom expressed the need for cuts in more of a general sense rather than individual items. The school board, I think, are correct. Uh, the School Board, I think, are correct in saying that, uh, they felt that they had already made cuts in one round from the earlier meeting, and were, um, interested in knowing exactly where money that was cut from the School Committee would end up going to in the Hamilton Town Budget. The, um, all recognized, I think, that we still, in both towns and School Committee, essentially have a, uh, amount of money that's not sufficient for everyone's needs, and how are we gonna squeeze out at the edge to, uh, get by another year? What else did you see in there, Catherine?
I think that was a really good, um, review.
Yep, the one other item we should mention was the, uh, the School Board had, uh, had, uh, I'm not sure the exact term, excess money or funds unexpected due to the pandemic, to the town tune of $2 million, which they are, uh, applying to, uh, OPEB. So that was, uh, not directly, uh, talked about head-on, but that was another amount of money that was in the flow of the conversation.
Right, and I think there is, uh, they, they approved, the School Committee approved a tentative budget just before our meeting. Um, I do believe a copy of their tentative budget is floating around Town Hall, either with Trudy or with Jamie. So, I'll try to make sure that we get copies of that, and I'm sure the FinCom will want copies as well for their meeting. So, thank you for that. Okay, I think we're down to the infamous other matters, as may not have been res- reasonably anticipated by the Chair. I'm imagining there are 15 of those, but I don't have any that are at the top of my head. So, um, the only thing I will mention on this point is that we do have, and we've talked about this, regularly scheduled meetings on February 1st and February 15th. I think that should be. Gosh, I didn't even, yeah, February should be the first and third. So, but right now, we have regularly scheduled meetings on the 1st and the 15th. That said, as we, as we know, um, that we may have to add something. And the other thing is the FinCom, Jim has put together a schedule, and he would like for us, as we typically do, to have a joint meeting towards the end of the budget cycle or towards the time when the warrant closes, um, a joint meeting between the Select Board and the FinCom, so that, um, uh, we can just make sure we're of a mind, uh, on what we're, uh, in favor of, or we know what our differences are before we, you know, sort of finalize our budgets and go into town meeting. So, just to get an update from them and understand where, what, you know, direction they're going on some of these. And I guess there is one other matter that wasn't anticipated, uh, that has to do with this, and that is, um, I think it's, uh, if they haven't gotten the message already, and Jamie will convey this to them. After what we heard tonight about ARPA, it seems to me that the FinCom could perhaps with Jamie look at some opportunities for using ARPA money to, um, give some relief to our budget for next year by purchasing things, uh, one-time items. This is one-time money, but purchasing perhaps one-time items in, uh, that were in the budget, but could be purchased now and free up some, uh, space for the next, for next year's budget. Anything else? Gary?
Sorry, yeah, just to pitch, you know, there's, Trudy said, let's get some candidates out there to get on the ballot. We really can't go forward with the vacancies in our elected positions. We really need people to step up.
Yep, very true.
I second that as well. I'm wondering if we could, um, you know, kind of spread out our meetings a little bit. Looks like we put a lot of things on February 1st. If we could maybe work on a meeting and even have one next Tuesday. I know it's gonna be a little extra work, and maybe even squeeze one out on the 8th, and then, then we could use one of those for, uh, the FinCom with us as well.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I think what, what we haven't been able to do, um, that has been done in the past is, there's usually a list of items that the TA has that, you know, is three or four weeks, three or four meetings long, and we can pick and choose. Um, I don't think we'll be able to have a meeting next week, um, just because that's when Tom starts, and I'd like to have him involved with this setting up the meeting, um, and he can, but he can spend that time gathering all the things that need to happen, and then we can, to your point, Diane, spread them out, um, you know, maybe every week, um, just, um, you know, through the month of February as we get closer to ATM. So that's a good point. Okay.
Okay.
Nothing else? Take that, uh, we'll take that.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Wait just one, one second. I, you know, I see Patrick who's on the top of my screen, but I couldn't, couldn't see his hand. Can we just take a second, Patrick? Did you want to add something?
I, uh, as a point of order, I just want to adjourn the, uh, Town Government Study Committee meeting. So, I, I, I move that we.
Please do.
Town Government Study Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Kirsten?
Yes.
Harriet? She's here. Roger?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
Patrick Wardell, me, yes, as well. Uh, Town Government Study is adjourned. Thank you very much to the Select Board and everyone who attended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, um, so I think we had a, a motion and a second. Did we get to the second, um, on the adjournment for the Select?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor? Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine? Yeah, so, uh, at, adjourned at 8:05.